The New Britain Board of Education. Providing students with a high-quality education.
Good evening, the time is now 6:06 and we are going to call the Board of Education meeting to order. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Dr. Sims, if you would please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you will please call the roll.
Ms. Nicole Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Nicholas Mercia.
Here.
Ms. Gail Sanders Connolly.
Here.
Ms. Catherine Cheney.
Here.
Mr. Merrill Ray.
Here.
Dr. Violet Jimenez Sims.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. James Sanders.
Here.
Thank you very much. And actually, you beat me to the punch, but I'd like to welcome Ms. Diana Reyes to her first official Board of Education meeting. Thank you very much for joining us this evening and we're so glad to see you. Take a brief moment of meditation. Is there anyone signed up for this meeting? Oh, he's here. Okay. Okay. In case anyone was wondering, we were trying to make sure, we waited for somebody who really wanted to speak to the board tonight, so we wanted to make sure they read the audience first. But they aren't, they made it. Okay. The floor is now open for public participation. There are three people on the list. If Jeff and Vanessa Vasquez will please come forward, please state your name, your address, and what you would like to speak with us about.
Good evening. My name is Jeff T. Vasquez, this is my wife Vanessa Vasquez. And we're here with concern tonight. I just want to get this out of the way before we start because they haven't spoken yet, but I do support these pastors over here that will speak to you guys as of their concern, as just regular folk. But our concern, I'm going to let my wife get into the details of our concern, there's a situation that happened with the school and the bus company.
Hi, good evening, everyone. We had an issue with a bus driver on Friday. She did not show up to pick up my daughter who was in preschool. I do have surveillance cameras that have timestamps and she, her bus does not appear anywhere on them. It does, my husband does show up. We have contacted the school, we have contacted the Director of Transportation for the Board, we have contacted First Student. And while they did pull the surveillance footage of their bus, because after my husband dropped my daughter off at school, they did call and they said the GPS says that she did show up, but I don't see her anywhere on my cameras. He was out there, she didn't show up. So when she came to drop off our daughter that afternoon, he boards the bus and he's like, hey, I didn't see you this morning, what happened? So then she starts yelling at him, why did you call? This is my job, hitting her chest. So at that point, he did speak back to her sternly, he never swore at her, he never said anything derogatory to her or anything like that. He gets off the bus with my daughter, I have surveillance footage of her rolling the window down, continuing to yell at him, and he's just like, okay ma'am, goodbye, have a nice day. So I guess the Director of Transportation said that the manager of First Student viewed the bus tapes and it was his belief that she was not belligerent at all. But I mean, I can hear her on my recordings, I told him I was more than willing to show them to him, and he was just like, well, I have to review them. So I just, I'm not, it's not sitting well, the way the situation was handled. It was also implied that because my husband did respond back to her, that maybe it was his fault too. Which a similar thing happened, I'm getting the feeling that district-wide, it's like either everyone's at fault or no one's at fault. My older son had an issue, he goes to Slade. Some little girl followed him on his way home from school, hit him. We went with the situation to the school and he was told, well, you have to write an apology letter too, or else you're going to get a two-day community service, just like the little girl. And it's like, that's, to me, that's the equivalent of, well, you know, you shouldn't have dressed that way and that wouldn't have happened to you. It's very, very unacceptable and I am very upset.
I would like to add to that, our kids, they just transitioned from private school to public school, wanted to try it out. This is our first experience and it's a shame, I had to call my friend Carmelo Rodriguez, he is the President of the New Britain Latino Coalition, I worked with him before, we were in law enforcement. And that's a shame that my wife and I have to experience that from these New Britain schools and these principals that are watering down these situations and making them seem like there's no bullying, like the bus drivers don't do this. And to find out that...
Oh, that First Student is based in Ohio?
First Student's not even in Ohio.
I'm calling a company that's not even here and the manager gives my husband an attitude and is like, I don't need to give you my name. And I don't know where this man is, I just looked up to see, and they're not even based here.
So, you know, we would like to get a call or email from someone telling us our next step because we do not want this bus driver. My daughter right now, she's traumatized. She told me this morning, I do not want to get on that bus, she's three years old. This lady yelled at me in front of all these kids. But of course, they're trying to spin it as I was the accuser, which is not so. I deal, I deal with people on a daily basis, my IPC skills are up to par.
And the thing is, she, we've already had an issue with her saying that she has to pick up another kid, that he needs to hurry up and buckle her. My daughter has chunky thighs, if the seatbelt doesn't fit her, we have to adjust it. So she's like, hurry up, I have to go, I'm going to be late. I've watched her blow through the stop sign on the corner. So it's a bunch of little things even before this incident, and it's not months, my daughter just started at Roosevelt October the 15th. So it's been like, what, two weeks?
Yeah, so we would like someone to reach out to us for, we can find some resolution, some positive resolution, because it's unacceptable to hear some watered-down version and just sweep it under the rug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please make sure that you leave your phone number and email address with this lady.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Mr. John Boyd.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I'm John Boyd of 37 Highland Terrace. We are living in an increased globalized world where graduates must work with a wide range of individuals, express knowledge beyond what their degree is in, and find innovative solutions to the emerging challenges facing our society. As a university student, I'm an interdisciplinaryan, which means my objective is to always find innovative cross-disciplinary approaches to solving complex problems. The Consolidated School District of New Britain should adopt American Sign Language as one of the official languages taught in our district. Embracing ASL would benefit all students, not those just deaf or hard of hearing. According to the World Health Organization, an estimated 360 million individuals suffer from hearing loss, which equates to 5% of the world's population. In our nation, ASL is the sixth common, most lan, is the sixth most common language. Currently, over 30 school districts in Connecticut provide ASL as a course. If we as a country believe that it should be possible for all to communicate, then shouldn't we make it possible for everyone to feel accepted, accepted to partake in discussion with ease? Tonight, we're going to examine the need for ASL to become a quote "accepted" language and taught in our district from three perspectives: the students, the educators, and the greater When students learn ASL, there is an increased development in their oral language skills. When students are taught a sign, they use the four traditional pedagogical modalities: kinesthetic, visual, auditory, and tactile. ASL signers tend to have incredible spatial reasoning and they tend to have higher IQs as well. ASL provides an opportunity for students to experience success and gain confidence in public speaking in a non-threatening environment. As it relates to educators, both frontline teachers and administrators will benefit from the inclusion of ASL in our district. This, the implementation of this policy shouldn't be all that difficult since I mentioned earlier, 30 institutions in Connecticut have this already. ASL has a unique grammar structure that is associated with it, which will ensure that students will improve their English and spelling skills and just have a better grasp on our language as well. According to a Pennsylvania, a Pennsylvania university study conducted by our own CCS, CCSU graduate Marilyn Daniels, students who ended up learning ASL end up with a 15% to 20% improvement in their vocabulary and test higher than non-ASL kids. Finally, to the greater New Britain community, we'll see results of adopting ASL in spades. When members of the community learn ASL, it humanizes the connection with the deaf and with the deaf community and with the greater community as well. Literally, these small gestures will create waves in our community. I just want to tell a short little motif. A Starbucks barista learned ASL to communicate with a hearing impaired customer. This customer visited the cafe two to three times a week and engaged by typing out their order on their cellphone. But one day, this customer was pleasantly surprised when the barista started signing his order. This is just one small example of the real-world impact when students learn ASL. So let's break down barriers. Let's build bridges for our students and empower them, them not only in our district, but in the real world. Our city prides itself on being in a diverse community, which has literally built bridges between communities and joining different cultures. I would implore this Board of Education to explore the opportunity to add American Sign Language as one of the official world languages to the curriculum. Thank you.
On behalf of Local 871, I extend greetings to you all. Also, on behalf of Local 871, I would like to say with regards to a certain principal here, about damn time, that's their quote, not mine. I'd like to say a few words just really quick about my sister Andrea, and I can sort of sum it up in these, well, one, two, three, five key points. There are some things, I thought about this, you know, earlier today when I found out she was on a docket. There are some things that are so right that they can't be wrong. So that was my first sort of thought that I had, having worked with her at Smalley for a little bit of time, one of the best years of my life. Having her, having her at Smalley School, I just want to say a few things about her. You guys know what you have, she's phenomenal. Having her at that school is great for teachers, great for kids, and great for parents. She's a leader that respects labor and the contract, although I know for a fact that teachers are willing to do all kinds of crazy things for her, I know that already, so, okay? The kids there, I mean, they deserve her, the school deserves her, and the teachers deserve her. She's a very, very special person and a great friend. I might get in a ton of trouble by saying this because it's going to be on camera now, but if there's ever an extra pair of hands that you need, I'd work for you for free any day of the week. Except for Sunday, because that's, except for, for the record though, except for the record, I just got to put this on the public record though, except for Sunday because that's Rosa Parros Day, okay? So I just want to let you know. But in any event, we're very thrilled with the choice, you guys have made a wonderful choice. She's everything that you want, an administrator and a leader. She leads, as we say in the military, from the trenches. No one at that building, I don't think there's anyone at that building that can say she's not in the thick of it when she's there. So she knows they love her, but we just want to, you know, get it on film, on camera, right? In terms of that. So we wish you the best of luck, my dear, and we hope to work with you for as long as we can. Thank you and good night.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Yes, I can't, you said you're... Please state your name and address.
I'll be translating for her.
Buenas noches.
Good night, good evening.
Bueno, estamos aquí en representación...
We're here representing...
...del cuerpo pastoral...
The Pastoral Body.
...de la ciudad de New Britán...
Of the City of New Britain.
...y de la emisora radial...
And of the radio station.
...la nueva restauración...
The new restoration.
...96.9 FM.
FM.
Aquí en la ciudad de New Britán.
Here in the City of New Britain.
Así que los felicito, están hermosos.
We congratulate you guys, y'all are beautiful.
El panel se ve espectacular.
Y'all look spectacular.
Y aquí que le habla pues, una amiga...
And here, here who speaks to your friend.
...pastora traída desde Puerto Rico, la ciudad del Caribe, la isla del Caribe.
Came from the Caribbean islands of Puerto Rico.
La pastora Magdalia Márquez.
Pastor Magdalia Márquez.
Y estamos aquí en representación...
And we are here in representation.
...de muchos pastores...
Of many pastors.
...que hoy querían estar aquí.
That today would like to be here.
Pero por verdaderas circunstancias ajenas...
But due to other circumstances.
...a sus agendas pues, hay unos cuantos que han llegado.
To their agendas, only a few were able to be here.
Está conmigo...
Here.
...que no nos soltamos...
That we don't get rid of.
...el pastor Alexis López, que pido que llegue aquí conmigo.
A pastor Alexis López.
Ese es el varón que estamos verdad dando la carrera y la milla extra para qué?
The man that gives the career and the extra mile.
Para hoy estar aquí con ustedes.
So that we can be here with you today.
Tenemos muchas preguntas.
We have a few or a lot of questions.
Para hacerle.
To ask.
Y sabemos...
And we know.
...que Dios ha puesto...
That God has put.
...a cada uno de ustedes...
Each one of you all.
...en este lugar...
In this place.
...porque serán de bendición.
Because y'all are going to be of a blessing.
A lo que se trata...
Of to what comes.
...la educación...
The education.
...de nuestros hijos...
Of our children.
...y de nuestros nietos.
And our grandchildren.
Yo tuve a mi nieto aquí un año...
She had her grandchild, her grandson here for a year.
Tuve que regresarlo a Puerto Rico.
Had to return him back to Puerto Rico.
Porque esta persona que ustedes ven aquí...
Because this person that you see here...
...hace cinco años...
Over five years, son.
...la ciencia dio un diagnóstico...
Science gave a diagnostic.
...de cáncer en el hígado.
Of liver cancer.
Pero Dios...
But God.
Dios...
God.
Dios...
God.
...hizo...
Did.
...el milagro.
The miracle.
Nos sometimos a un tratamiento...
She submitted herself to a treatment.
...de radiación.
Of radiation.
No puedo tener a mi nieto conmigo...
And so therefore she can't have her grandson.
...porque el tipo de radiación...
Because of, due to her radiation.
...atrofiaría el crecimiento de él.
It would stop the growth of him.
Tiene apenas seis años.
And he's only six years old.
Pero el año que estuvo aquí...
But the year that he was here.
...en la escuela...
In the school.
Um, homeschool.
Homeschool.
Excelente escuela...
It was an excellent.
...el inglés que aprendió en un año...
The English that he learned in one year.
...es perfecto.
Is perfect.
Eso hace cada uno de ustedes...
That makes each and every one of you.
...con el granito de arena...
With that grain of rice.
...que aportan ustedes...
That y'all port.
...para la niñez.
For the children.
Para los jóvenes que se están forjando...
For the youth that are growing.
...en este tiempo.
In these times.
Así que aquí cuentan con nosotros...
So you count in us.
...con nuestras oraciones...
With our prayers.
...para que Dios le dé la sabiduría...
So that God could give the wisdom.
...para que Dios le dé la fortaleza...
And the strength.
...le dé la fuerza...
The strength.
...para cada decisión que ustedes tengan que tomar...
For each decision that you got made.
...sea lo que sea...
Whatever it may be.
...la consulten primero con Dios...
May y'all consult first with God.
...y luego la puedan plasmar en un papel...
And then y'all could put it in paper.
...para el bien común...
For the commune.
...de nuestros hijos...
For the great communion.
...nuestros nietos...
Our grandchildren.
...porque son el futuro...
Because they are the future.
...de nuestra nación.
Of our nation.
Ahí se van a formar...
That's where they're going to be formed.
...presidentes...
Presidents.
...gobernadores...
Governors.
...alcaldes...
Mayors.
...representantes...
Representatives.
...pero que vengan...
But may they come.
...con la sabiduría...
With the wisdom.
...y el intelecto...
And then the intellect.
...que verdaderamente necesitamos para nuestros niños...
That we truly need our children.
...y para nuestra juventud.
And for our youth.
Declaro bendición sobre cada uno de ustedes.
I declare blessings over each and every one of you.
Declaro la sabiduría del eterno...
Wisdom of the eternal.
...para cada uno de ustedes...
Up to each and every one of you.
...en el nombre poderoso...
And in powerful name.
...de Jesús.
Of Jesus.
Que él es el que tiene poder.
That he has power.
Amén.
Amen.
Amén. Pastor.
Pastor.
Estuvo buenos.
It was good.
It was good. Estamos en el día de hoy aquí.
Today, we are here.
Estamos preocupados.
Because we're worried.
Eh, con respecto...
With the aspect.
...a cosas que se pueden implementar en los currículos.
Of things that can be implemented in the curriculum.
Eh, no venimos aquí...
We don't come here.
...a decirle a nadie...
To tell anyone.
...lo que tienen que hacer.
What they may have to do.
Pero venimos aquí...
But we come here.
Verdaderamente...
Truthfully.
...preocupados.
Worried.
Porque tenemos hijos...
Because we have children.
...tenemos nietos...
We have grandchildren.
...que están en las escuelas en esta ciudad.
That are in the schools of this city.
Y nos preocupa...
And it worries us.
...qué es lo que se mueva...
What moves...
...en el departamento...
In the department.
...de educación.
Of education.
So como ciudadanos...
So as citizens.
Eh, como pueblo cristiano...
As a Christian body.
...vamos a estar aquí...
We're going to be here.
...presente...
Present.
...para poder...
To be able.
...estar...
To be.
Eh, pendiente...
Looking.
...a lo que vaya a acontecer.
Looking at to what's going to come.
Eso es todo.
That is it.
Así que Dios les bendice...
Make God bless.
...grandemente.
Greatly.
Bendiciones.
Blessings.
Y gracias.
¿Tiene que decir algo, mi amor?
Okay.
Y los pastores, si alguno de los pastores quiera.
Okay. So, my name's Alisa Cruz Gonzalez. God bless you all. And I'm here from the Ministry, Ministry of His Love Restoration Center. So we are located at 600 East Street. And I wanted to first then ask if there was any other pastor that would like to say a few words, so that way I could translate for them if they needed. Yes.
Good evening, my name is Vinnie Placares. I'm a pastor, I represent Grace Baptist Spanish Church here in New Britain. Been a resident, my son is a resident here, and I'm the owner of that restaurant right across the street, Mofongo. Okay? So...
God pay attention.
I'm not here to instight you to go over there. I come to you because I have a concern and a need. I've been listening to other pastors come to me and share their concerns, and it's a concern that hits the Spanish community. It's a concern that a lot of our Spanish kids are flunking out of school, are struggling with school, nothing that you're doing wrong. It is something we as parents and grandparents need to help the Board of Education determine what are the causes, root causes that are driving some of our kids to drop out. And I believe that we want to stand together, united, the Spanish church here to say that we want to be part of anything that we can help you to help the community move forward. We want to be able to change the statistics, take them from the negative to the positive. We want to be able to show you that the Spanish community want to hear what is it that we need to do as parents, as grandparents, to help you move forward. Okay? So I'm not speaking about myself, I'm speaking about members here, other pastors. I do speak two languages and I do preach in two languages, so communicating is not a problem for me, okay? What I'm asking you is that we recognize that in the past, the Spanish community has been non-present, especially during parents' teachers' meeting, and we want to change that behavior. We know that it's true education, we want, we heard things like, some of the parents will say, well, our pastor wants us to be, we can't, you know, be away from church, we can't go to a meeting because that's church night. We want to change that behavior, we want to know that the kids got to come first. We preach it from the pulpit, we preach victory in Christ Jesus, we want the kids to know that it matters, that we need to be part of the community. And these kids need to understand, you have your personal challenges, but you have education first. You got to do your best. And that's that you need as a Christian family to represent Christ as a student, in the community, and to be the best you can be. So we want to help you move forward. And that means that we want to be a partnership with you. We want to embrace and recognize the need and go do something about it. No more being dormant, we want to be active.
Yes.
Good night. Welcome.
No? So, on behalf of, again, the Christian faith community, we want to thank you all for the great work that y'all are doing within New Britain schools. And I personally thank you guys because my son has been here for about a year, from San Antonio, Texas, and he has, he's not in the, he's in the adult learning, but still is in the education where he is learning a lot of great, and great attention here since he's been here from San Antonio, Texas. And not only that, but the curriculums, the way they treat him and everything, it's not judgmental or anything, but it's very kind and courteous. So I thank you all for y'all's opportunity and we support you all. God bless.
Thank you. Ms. Lernery is going to give you guys the paper, if you can, escriben el nombre, a paper.
Okay.
Por favor, gracias. The other thing that I wanted to say was on November 13th, there's a community forum and we would like you guys to attend so that we can, so there's more discussion. It is at OIC, on 114 North Street, at 5:30.
What date?
November 13th.
Okay. Good guy.
Okay. That's the next community forum, so that'll be a good place to start with the organizing and talking about how we can help the children together.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. What was the address again?
114 North Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd actually like to just make a quick motion to add an item to our agenda at the top here for Boards in Recognition.
Second.
All those in favor, say in front by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yeah, so. I'd like to move that we recognize there are several members of our board who are stepping down, and I'd like to make a motion that the board recognize those who will not be coming back for the service that they have given to the board. It takes many hours and a lot of time, so I'd like to make the motion that we recognize Ms. Nicole Rodriguez, Mr. Jim Sanders Jr., Ms. Kathy Cheney, and also Ms. Ivonne Munoz, who had just recently stepped down. And I would also like to point out that those of you who are in the list should recuse yourselves since we're talking about you.
Okay.
Oh, second.
So can I take the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, say in front by saying aye.
Aye.
And we actually have some certificates, and this one I'd like to read. New Britain Board of Education would like to recognize and honor Nicole Rodriguez for her past six years of service to the families and children of New Britain, both as a leader and member of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Here it is. Did it come?
And as a personal note, as actually talking with Nicole earlier, and it has been a pleasure, we came on the board right around the same time, and I have learned so much from Nicole. It's just been an honor to work with her. She has always been just very compassionate, understanding, patient, not, you know, willing to challenge me when we disagreed, but from a place of wanting to educate, inform, and reach consensus and work together. It's just been an absolute pleasure to work with you these past six years, and I'm going to miss you a lot.
Thank you.
So that's a personal note. This is to recognize, the Board of Education would like to recognize and honor Catherine Cheney for her service to the families and children of New Britain, both through the work here on the board, but also through the fundraising and other work that she does.
You are very welcome. Thank you.
And the New Britain Board of Education would like to recognize and honor James Sanders
Jr. for his service to the families and children of New Britain as well.
And Jim is another one that we have not always necessarily gotten along.
What?
No.
No.
But I think anyone can say that about, even his sister.
Most of us.
Yeah. And this is for Ivonne, again, it just says, the New Britain Board of Education. Again, it just says, "The New Britain Board of Education would like to recognize and honor Yvonne Munoz for her service to the families and children of New Britain," and I'm sure someone can get that sent off to her. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm surprised, adding things to the agenda on there. Okay. The superintendent's report is next on the agenda.
Right. And so you kind of led me right down the right path on Mr. Mercy here. So this is my fourth year now, and I feel like I came into the superintendency with this board. And it's going to be such an adjustment. I've grown right alongside you. You've helped me. You have been very supportive. And as new people come on, we learn, and you kind of said it very well when we were having dinner beforehand. It's bringing the new members on and helping them see that our focus is on kids, right? It's on kids and it's on our families. And it's not politics. It's about doing what is best for all kids. And I have to say, you know, years ago when I sat over there and I watched in, was a lot different than what we see now in terms of unity and voice. And there is disagreements, but it doesn't always go party line. It just goes personality. And I agree with you, Jim. No. But so I want to thank you, just on behalf of me and all of our cabinet members, with just a small token, this is really on behalf of 10,000 students too. So thank you for all you've done. I'm certainly going to miss all of you who are leaving. Welcome all new people and look forward to working together now with a potentially, you know, quite a new board. It's okay. A long weekend. So thank you. That's what I want to say. And I do have some good news too. I wanted to, and Sandra could not be here tonight. It's her son's senior night for soccer. So I have to thank Randy today, who was running around until about 5:06. Would you say that's about right? Just really looking at, you know, attendance is a big thing, and we know that it's a symptom oftentimes to a root cause of why students aren't coming to school. But I do want you to know that we have really, we have strategy around this. We have been very strategic with all of our actions, from your approval of hiring our family school liaisons, to several other incentives around attendance. So I'm happy to report that 40 days out, comparing last, the first 40 days last year to this 40 days, we kind of, we sliced it for you in many different ways for you to see. But overall, that we've decreased, which is a good thing, our chronic absence by 4.34 percentage points, not percent, but percentage points. I'd like to, and this is our first year really of looking at our high-needs subgroups, which includes our EL learners and our students with special needs. And because of, because our first year, we didn't really have a baseline from 40 days last year, but starting at last year, at the end of last year, we had about 31% of our EL students chronically absent. When we look today, we've decreased for the first 40 days by 11 percentage points. Again, we say if we can stay below that number, then we're, what we really want is to just keep decreasing that number. And similarly with our students with special needs, we have decreased chronic absence by 10 percentage points the first 40 days. I'm holding my breath about what today brought at the high school. You never know. There's so many things that we battle with attendance, right? You know, potential storm on Friday. We have school. I want everyone to know, we have school until we don't. Right? And it's not a worry that we don't want to always send our kids into school, and there's different reasons, and there's a lot of competing forces out there today. But school is the place to be. This is, this is the ticket to getting an education that sets you up for life. And you can look through it. I will say, one of, and this is, we're going to kind of give a little sneak preview of tomorrow. Tomorrow, we do have Election Day professional learning at New Britain High School, and two schools will be named tomorrow. One as having the best percentage of chronic absence, or the lowest percentage, and that is Lincoln Elementary School. I know, that sounds so bad. It's hard to hear. Lincoln Elementary School is at, I think, 7%, 7.25%. Nope, Gaffney. Oh, no, sorry. Gaffney. Gaffney, thank you. But the most improved school is Smalley Elementary at 7, 7 percentage points. And just one good night for Andrew Lincoln. This is for real. So good. But so, and we want to recognize it in a couple of ways. One is that maintaining that level, because some schools don't have too far to go, while other schools have far to go. So we want to be able to recognize those schools that are really putting those strategies in place and working it every single day. Yeah. And then I also broke it out for you, and you can read through that. Our most improved grade levels were grade 12 with a 7 percentage point increase, and grade 6, which I'm really happy about, because that's that transition year when we're leaving an elementary cozy little place to a big middle, right? So there's that. So good news on that front. We will keep you updated. We're also, I know the state, the state doesn't look at it like we do, and we are, I'm most interested in comparing ourselves from last year this time to this year this time and across cohorts, because it's important, right? To compare one year to the next and not look at a population of students. And I understand that it's a trend and we need to look at that. But every way we slice it right now, we're looking pretty good for attendance, and so we're happy with that. And just the last thing that I want to point out, and Trisha, I don't know if you wanted to talk a little bit about it. I just wanted to show you that we will be a presence at the CAPE CAPS convention. And Trisha Pottemore, do you want to talk about it for like two minutes?
Two seconds. I don't know if we can put up the public real quick.
Can we just put that right on?
Both Dr. Tucker and I are going to be heading over there with Dr. Rebecca Good and Lawrence... Dr. Rebecca Good is the director of Relay, and she's been working with us on equity, and we'll get that up in a second. And Lawrence Afredi is in the partnership office at CCSU, and we were invited, well, we were encouraged to apply for this workshop panel discussion on our minority recruitment and retention plan for November 15th. And we're really quite excited about not only attending, but also being, conducting a workshop there. So if you just go to the next slide. I don't, does she want to, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. We have been working since 2016 in the talent office to really focus on three areas of diversification of the educator pipeline. In 2016, when we started, we were starting with a baseline because there was not a plan in place. So what we've done is we have it divided into three specific areas, looking at what could we do to enhance our existing staff that we have here? Also, what could we do to improve and recruit more people to come, looking at it from a short-term perspective as well as a long-term perspective?
So the next slide really does break it out into those three categories.
Okay, I'm trying to see.
Right.
Okay. So for existing staff, over the past two years, we have offered cultural competency training as well as Title IX training for all of our new teachers that have joined us, and that has gone very well. We have received very positive feedback from them, and they find the information very, very helpful as they are entering their careers here in New Britain. We have also offered it to our existing staff, our existing administrators specifically. We started last year with an overview of it. Rebecca came in. We worked with her closely. She worked with our administrators three times throughout last year. This year, she is working with our administrators on a monthly basis to really drill down further on addressing cultural competencies and making sure that they have the skills that they need to address situations within their schools, working with their staff, and working with their students. We also have a very diverse recruitment team that has been put in place so that when we do go out to various career fairs, we have faces and people who represent New Britain from a variety of positions, from administrators to teachers to support staff. We also partnered last year with CAS. We have teacher leaders within our district who attended a year-long leadership academy with CAS. And these are people who really have aspirations to become administrators. They were in the year-long program. We supported them. We went out to see their presentations twice. We received feedback from the person at CAS that worked with them. And we're very pleased that at least three of them have now moved into administrative positions this year and are very successful with that. I'm trying to see, it says principal. Also with the principals, we worked with administrators, new administrators that were hired last year. We held a variety of sessions with them. We partnered and had mentors assigned to them. And at the end of the year, we did receive feedback from them. We wanted to know how was it being paired up with a mentor? What did you get from this experience? And the main thing that they gained from the experience was, because they were new to this position, it was wonderful having a seasoned person that they could, first of all, establish a relationship with. Secondly, work with and call upon at times when they had specific questions, and they really developed those relationships and still remain to this day, even though the year-long mentorship is over, they have a friend within the district that they can rely on, another administrator. We have centralized our hiring policies and procedures, specifically focusing on screening and interview process. We continuously serve on the CREG MTR Advisory Committee. We have presented our diversification strategy plan, which was recognized as a best practice and a model. And we've had interesting dialogue last year and this year with our colleagues from around the state. We have our relay cohort that is going very well. I'm very pleased that this year we have five persons in our cohort. As you know, the district only supports three, but there are two other persons within that cohort that are paying for it themselves, and these are people who are paraprofessionals, who are, who have degrees and want to move into the teaching profession. So what we have done there is, Trisha and I have expanded the work that we're doing with those students, and we now meet with them bi-monthly because we want to make sure that we are providing resources and support for them to be successful once they complete the program. We want to make sure that they're paired with the right resident advisor. Trisha goes out and does walkthroughs with them, so we've had two meetings with them thus far. It's going very well, and we also relay that information to our relay liaison to make sure that everyone is successful.
So for the short-term plan that we're having, we have our higher education partnerships with, mainly with CCSU and USJ, but we also do partner with University of Hartford. We just partnered with Grand Canyon University, University of Bridgeport, and we just recently are working with the University of Puerto Rico in creating a partnership with them. And we have people from all over, working with our students, in our classrooms, with our teachers, with that. We've strengthened our MOUs, mainly with CCSU. We have the Be the Blue Devil change, where we are looking at our high school students who are in the Ed Rising program, and so they don't wait to get to college. We're getting them, when they're rising juniors and rising seniors, to go to their bridge program and their opportunity program where they work with students over the summer on team building, on what does it mean to be a teacher? What does it mean to have the responsibility of transferring into the college experience? And with USJ, we're going to look at that same MOU that we established with CCSU over the summer and move it into the USJ, because USJ does provide us with different certifications, preschool, kindergarten, and special education, which we really do want to fill those classrooms with. We also, I'm sorry, I picked the hurricane colors and now I'm suffering. I'm sorry. I might have lasted. And then, of course, moving into the long term, we are looking to talk to legislation, legislators about really opening up that licensure for a teacher. We have one of the highest licensures in the United States. We really don't have any reciprocation in any of our neighboring states, and we have spoke at State Department of Education meetings about that, how difficult it is to have that license, people coming from different states who want to teach for us. So we're working with the state on that. One of the major reasons why we have the Ed Rising program in our middle school and our high school is so that students who live in New Britain, who have gone to New Britain, come back to us, and they are our future teachers. And that's one of our biggest prizes here for that pipeline. And then we are collaborating with the mayor's office on incentivizing coming to New Britain, living and working in New Britain. And we've had some very successful meetings with their economic development department and looking at what can they do so that we can get teachers to come here, live and work and play in our city. So just, those are just some of the things that we've done on the long and the short term with the minority recruitment and retention. That's what we're going to be presenting at our workshop and our panel down in the Marriott down in Mystic. And then we, these are just some of the recognitions that have, it's the next slide from the talent department that's gone along hand-in-hand with some of the things that we've done with our minority recruitment and retention plan. We work very closely with the C-10 initiative, and that's what, in the long and short of it is, is that all of the requirements to become a student, to become a teacher, you know, what does it take to be day-one ready to get into our classrooms? That's what C-10 is all about.
And that was a year-long program that New Britain was selected to be a part of, along with 10 other districts around the state at CCSU.
Yep. And we attended it for two years. So, you know, the starting of it and then last year was the real hard work of what does a student teacher need to know and be able to do to get into the classroom? So that was really very exciting work. And then we were cited by the State Department of Education for the work of our minority recruitment and retention plan. We were invited to present at CASPA, CADE, and CASPO. And the last recognition we got was, we were nationally recognized by ASPA for our innovative minority recruitment and retention plan.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We did have senior nights night for our soccer, our young men, but it started to...
And we were here.
We were here. I was there at four, but I found out that I was going early. Hopefully they're doing well. Our soccer team is doing well. All in all.
Of course. Yeah. So first of all, huge shout-out to Dr. Tucker, because I know that you are working diligently to make all that happen, and I've run into you at recruiting fairs and I see the hustle. So that's fantastic. And thank you. And I just have a quick question about the cultural competency training for new and existing staff. Is that just at the supervisory level, or is it for all New Britain faculty and staff at all levels?
Right now, it's new teachers and administrators. And the next phase that we're moving into, we are a PDEC committee. It's how in our role is how now at the school levels and working with our teachers. So that's our goal for this year.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Committee reports? So we have, go ahead. You can start.
So you will see that we are going to take in two donations. One is $4,000, and I believe the students are here to do a presentation for us.
Behind the podium.
I was going to say probably hiding behind the podium, but I can't see behind. And then we're taking in another $7,970 from New England Dairy. That is actually to improve access to and consumption of low-fat and fat-free dairy products. The funds will be utilized to purchase an insulated cambrue cart and blenders, which will help increase participation in the breakfast program. Smoothies for all.
Awesome. Awesome, awesome. Policy, please.
For policy, we have several things coming before the board tonight, some of them possibly to take action on just because they're simple reaffirms. Mostly minor changes.
Personnel?
Personnel, we have several new positions that went through committee that we're bringing forward tonight, which we explained in detail in the debate.
Curriculum?
We met and just had a couple of short things. One of them was, I had some questions about the chronic absenteeism and especially how our Latino students, who are the highest population of students with chronic absenteeism, were doing and what was, what was being done to address that specific population. And so some of those numbers were presented today. And also, we had Mr. Damon Pierce from the high school to talk a little bit about the new schedule, because there was a huge scheduling overhaul last year that shook everything up. And then another...
And next is board reports. So during board reports, just for, because committee reports, we are in four committees, right? I'm trying to teach and go at the same time, and I'm leaving. That's understood. So we have four committees. For those of you who are new to us, we have a policy committee. Committees are open to anyone in the public who wants to come. You can be there. Can participate, but you can be there and you can hear. You can hear what we're doing, how we're hashing it out. So a lot of the voting happens here, but a lot of the backwork happens in the committee meetings. So there's policy, curriculum, finance and operations, and personnel. So all of the new job requests and all that kind of stuff, that's where we find out what it is and why they're asking for it. So if you don't hear a lot of discussion during the evening, a lot of the work is done in those committee meetings. So board reports, this is the opportunity where if you're doing something, if you've been in a school or done something in the community, where people can share.
I actually have two things, and it's around sportsmanship. Our girls volleyball team had their senior night, I think it was Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday. Not only do they celebrate themselves, they actually celebrated the other team, which I thought was way...
That's awesome. I've never seen that.
Yeah. I thought that was pretty cool. And then, due to some facilities issues, we had to cancel the game and move the game to Rocky Hill High School. The Rocky Hill High School girls' team took down our girls' posters and decorated their gym so they can continue their senior night. I thought that was like...
That's really cool.
Yeah. That was like tear to my eye. Then, we actually received a, I'm not sure if this was an email, but it was from a Glastonbury football mom. She said, "I wanted to send you this note. I am hoping that you can pass this to Coach Jones and his staff. My son, Brandon Myers, plays for Glastonbury High School Football Team. We played a hard-fought game last night in New Britain. My son was injured on the play in the second quarter and had to be helped off the field. He was able to come back and finish the last few minutes of the half, but unfortunately, after halftime, he was not able to return. That being said, the reason I'm writing you this note is because after the game, every player from New Britain came over to Glastonbury's sideline to pat Brandon on the shoulder and wish him well. This was the epitome of sportsmanship, and I know how much it meant to Brandon. After a hard-fought game by New Britain and a well-deserved win, those kids showed great character, compassion, and sportsmanship for the game of football. It was truly an impressive sight and is something I will never forget. The New Britain community should be proud of these young men, of how these young men represented themselves, their families, their school, and their program. Thank you, Jeff and Carrie Myers."
Awesome. [applause]
I just wanted to say that a week or so ago, Nancy and Nick and I had the privilege of helping out at Roosevelt Early Learning Center, building the new Play Lab, which is going to be a really cool place. It was hard to pull everybody away from that 3D...
I have teachers as poop that had saw the administrators were playing with the fans. They were playing nicely at the fan...
Awesome. But that was just, there was lots of fun. There were staff and some parents who came to help. It was great.
Awesome. Yes?
And just a shout-out to Smith Elementary School for their trunk and treat. It was a great turnout, and the kids looked amazing in those costumes, and the teachers did an amazing, they were very creative with their trunks. Nice, nice decoration.
I actually had the opportunity just this, not this most recent weekend, but the weekend prior, to go down and present at a music educator conference in Virginia, just outside Washington, DC. And it was great to be able, is, one, part of my presentation was actually on some of the issues of teaching diversity as opposed to student population diversity and the effects that has on student achievement. So it was really good to be able to sort of talk about the things that New Britain is doing to address that issue, which is a national issue. So I was just really glad to be able to bring what we're doing and talk about it elsewhere in the professional community.
Awesome. I just want to also, I think I sent you all an email, invite you tomorrow, if you're free. We'll be at New Britain High School, about 1,000 of us together, from eight to... Small crowd. Yeah, just small.
You and your classmates.
From about eight to 10:30. At 10:30, and that will be all staff. And 10:30 to 11:30, Mr. Warren, Mr. Spalding, myself will be working with the pairs just for an hour to start to get into a little of the guiding principles document, especially the rights and responsibilities of staff and students and those things. So, but if you're, if you're up...
We'll work.
Come on over.
Okay.
10:30 to the pair.
Eight. Well, 8 o'clock starts the day for everyone, and the pairs will be there from 8 to 10:30. But then, we're going to work just specifically with the pairs from 10:30 to 11:30.
I have the opportunity to go to Di Loretto's Harvest Festival, and the most awesome thing about the festival, not only were the kids so cute and they were in their costumes, but it was run, for the most part, by the safety patrol. So the students were the runs, running all the games and welcoming people in and, you know, giving out candy to the littler kids. And it was just really cool to see the, because it's a, you know, pre-K through eighth school, to see the upper kids working with the little kids and, you know, doing an amazing job. It was smooth. It was well-run. The PTA did a great job, and it was great to see there was over 300 families represented there that evening. So it was awesome. And then, I, last week, hosted a trunk retreat harvest festival for the North Oak Community with the NRZ, and there was a lot of folks out from the community. It was great to see it. Ms. Reyes was there. Francisco Santiago was there. There was a lot of people just out of the community that came out to help and make sure that kids had a safe place and a dry place to be on Halloween. Kids were wet.
Wet.
Very wet.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate you for the last four years. I mean, I think you just do so well with, like, teaching me, I'm a non-educator, teaching me about education and about what teachers go through. And then Kathy, you know, we're going to stay in touch like two years, and then I'll see this guy enough, so we're good. Is that if that's legal? Well, Yvonne already left us. And then, welcome.
Okay. So we're going to go out of order a little bit. I'll entertain a motion for...
Yeah, I'd like to move that we take item 6B next, and that's discussing a legal settlement pertaining to a workers' comp claim. And the reason I'm asking that we take this out of order is we have an attorney here who, that we'd like to...
The little people. Oh, except for the little people.
So we will move it to be after item 3A. So moving 6B to be after item 3A. That's why I moved...
People have bad times. Second? Could you motion it?
Yeah.
So, and the motion on the table is to move it right after 3A so the little people can go to sleep or leave the meeting, because they're probably not interested in what's happening.
Sure they are. Yes, they are.
They're probably very interested and want to see all of the inner workings of the Board of Education. I am sure. Yes. All those in favor, simply saying aye. Those opposed? Yes, I will read it. Okay. We will now have a presentation, Kindness in Motion Program, a program empowering students to serve others through acts of kindness. Every February, students from New Hartford Schools submit proposals for programs that spreads kindness through the school or community. Administration then reviews the proposals and selects a number of ideas to receive of a $100 grant. Students then have until May to complete their Kindness in Motion projects. Paige and Ava Marchionne and Al, let's see if it was a Polish name?
Kroschada.
Kroschada proposed to give back to schools in need. They chose to help a city school in need, and they chose New Britain Public Schools. Their Kindness in Motion proposal was to hold a fundraiser at Dish &amp; Dad in Canton. Dish &amp; Dad then donates 25% of the total food sales. Food sales that evening were $1,000, so Dish donated $250. They also had a raffle table set up with 10 gift baskets. Tickets sold for $1. Raffle money collected was $400. They also had a bake sale table set up and collected $100 from bake sales. And lastly, they accepted donations and collected $200, for a total of $950.
This feels like a math problem.
A good one, though.
And I'm thinking to myself, I think they have a good spot where the internship with Mr. Ken King. The girls would like the money to be used for school supplies and books. If those girls would please come up.
They're not here, but they sent the video.
They sent the video. Oh! Now they're like me. I like it. Go ahead.
They're probably in bed already.
They probably are. At least go in bed. It's 7:00. That's true.
Can you guys explain to me what it is that you did?
Like, 10 people got picked, and we got picked, and a raffle and a bake sale.
Okay. And Paige, can you tell me what you'd like, what you'd like the money to go towards?
School supplies and books.
Okay. Paige, why were you chosen for Kindness in Motion?
There was like 30 groups, and we got chosen out of the top eight. I guess the teachers just liked our idea.
Okay. And what was the grade levels for this Kindness in Motion program?
Third through sixth.
Third through sixth grade. Okay. And what was your proposal to get chosen?
The teachers liked our idea.
And what was your idea?
To raise money for schools in need.
Very good.
All right. And those who are here, thank you.
So, the girls had soccer today, and they had, they've been extracurricular, but their grandparents are here, Mr. Marshoni, and their father's here, Frank Marshoni.
Please stand up. Please, please, please.
Thank you.
So if you would, if you would come forward and take the appreciation of the board, we would like to present you with items for the girls. This certificate of special recognition, the New Britain Board of Education presents this certificate to Ava Marchionne on the 4th day of November 2019, in recognition of her fundraising efforts through the Kindness in Motion program and generous donation to the students of the Consolidated School District of New Britain. Signed this day by Nicole Rodriguez, President of the Board of Education, and Nancy Sarah, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now, we're going to move on to the board. I like it.
I like to steal ideas.
I like it. Yes, we're going to do the board.
Motion to go into executive session to discuss item 6B, which is a legal settlement pertaining to workers' comp with the board, Superintendent Sarah and Dr. Tucker, and also, at that time, also discuss item 6A, which is administrative appointment.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? We shall return. All right. We are back.
Motion to approve a revised policy 6142.101, District Wellness.
Second.
Excuse me.
This was discussed at the last meeting, and the changes were highlighted. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the changes.
I do not.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? We shall return. All right. We are back.
Motion to approve a revised policy 6142.101, District Wellness.
Second.
Excuse me.
This was discussed at the last meeting, and the changes were highlighted. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the changes.
I do not.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? We shall return. All right. We are back.
Motion to approve a revised policy 6142.101, District Wellness.
Second.
Excuse me.
This was discussed at the last meeting, and the changes were highlighted. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the changes.
I do not.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We're taking off Q. Right?
You sure?
Yes.
I'm not taking it off.
She's taking it off.
I can't take it off.
You don't want to take it off?
No, no, she just...
No, I know. So are we...
Can we take off Q from the consent agenda?
Thank you. I'm like, it should be nice for you to take off. All right. All right, that's okay. If there are no, please look at the consent agenda, see if there's any other items. We are removing Q. If not... All right. Seeing no other removals or questions, we're going to move R to new business. Yes. Oh, Q, sorry. And I will entertain a motion to discuss the, you want to wait till he comes in?
You must leave the message.
Okay. That's why I was going to go. We will continue and hold on for that. Okay. All right. We're going to go to 6A. Yes, I'm not going to take the recesses. I want to entertain a motion to approve the administrative appointment for one Miss Andrea Philippi.
Second.
I don't know.
Motion. I know, I don't, I don't...
So we have a little bit of discussion here.
A lot of discussion.
So, in the back, I was saying, I was saying that it was so unfortunate that I was hearing all of these wonderful things about you from the Fagan Baseball Group. When they went to the school, they said how you were so welcoming to them, and you talked to them, and you, you know, were very kind and welcoming to them. And I thought, oh, okay, so that's one good thing, I guess. And then, somebody else was saying something about in the interview process, you were having this amazing success with your teachers, and they really like you or something. I don't know. And then, your assistant principal, something about how you guys gel so well together, and that you're an amazing team, and that you were so excited to have a six-month, kind of like trial waiting period before jumping on in. But then, I remember this conversation that we had, I don't know, a year or so ago, when you said you were so worried about leaving the classroom, that you weren't sure about whether or not, two years, right? That you weren't sure that you were going to miss your babies, right?
Six hundred and fifty.
Yeah. I think a year later, we were at a steam something in New Britain High, and you said something like, wow, it's not what I thought it was, but I'm so glad I'm doing it. So I guess there was some kind of unanimous decision about giving you some crazy school. I don't know if we should give you that one, but I think Smalley might be a good fit for you. But is everybody up? You think?
Yeah.
Just to be clear, it is her last meeting. And this is what six years does to you. I just wanted to say that Andrea has always been just such a, you know, caring person for the schools and for the students, and just the way she talks about her job. Like, I have, I work with educators, and there are educators who, you know, when you get them outside of, outside of school, they're just very down on, you know, because sometimes it's a very stressful job, but Andrea is just, I don't know how she always finds the silver lining, but she just always just is here, even before she was administrator or before she was a principal, she was at these board meetings, and she'd stay really late and, like, really seems to care about this.
I know. To the end, like, 11 o'clock, closes, and she'd still be there in the back, like, I got this.
Yeah. So I'm really happy to see her taking over at Smalley officially.
Officially, right. I mean, it's been her jam.
We didn't vote yet, though.
Right. Oh, sorry. We have to do, we have to vote, and we have to check. Can we do a roll call for this one?
Oh, my God.
She's like, oh, no. It is office room.
You want me to roll?
Yes, please.
Ms. Nicole Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholas Mercy?
Yes.
Ms. Gail Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Catherine Cheney?
Yes.
Mr. Merrill Gay?
Yes.
Dr. Violet Himmerson?
Yes.
Ms. Annie Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Diana Rea?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Rodriguez?
C.
Mr. James Sanders Jr.?
Ah.
Like, I have, I work with educators and there are educators who, you know, when you get them outside of, outside of school, they're just very down on, you know, because sometimes it's a very stressful job, but Andrea is just, I don't know how she always finds the silver lining, but she just always just is here even before she was administrator or before she was a principal, she was at these board meetings and she'd stay really late and like really seems to care about this.
I know, to the end, like 11 o'clock closers and she'd still be there in the back.
Yeah. So I, I'm really happy to see her taking over at Smalley officially.
Officially, right. I mean. Right, oh, sorry, we have to do, we have to vote and we have to check. Can we do a roll call for this one? She's like, oh no. It is office.
You want me to roll?
Yes, please.
Ms. Nicole Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholas Mercy?
Yes.
Ms. Gail Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Catherine Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Merrill Gay?
Yes.
Dr. Violet Himmerson?
Yes.
Ms. Annie Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Diana Rea?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Rodriguez?
C.
Mr. James Sanders Jr.?
Congratulations. And she's going right. And the microphone is yours, madam. Please introduce everybody who's here.
So, um, it says the microphone, I'm not sure which one. So thank you very much for this honor. You're right, two years ago, I wasn't even sure about leaving the classroom and then I became the AP and I liked that and then who knew, right? So it just kinda evolved on its own and I'm positive because I love my job and I love working in New Britain, I love our kids, so. And I work with amazing, amazing teachers, which makes my job a lot easier. So, um, everybody just, you know, chips in, does the work together. It takes the team, it takes the village. I actually brought my village with me, my family village. I, I'm thinking of the Greek wedding when they say meet the family, there's all these people. So me and my family, they're all here. So my husband Randy, who works at Vance, almost 30 years now. My kids Benjamin and Brandon, I can just talk a lot. But, um, my twin boys Benjamin and Brandon, my sister Lisa, my brother Peter, who owns Central Auto Sales here in New Britain. $10 they were giving me if I just plugged their business, so here it goes. Yes. My aunt and uncle Helen Everett Campanelli, who said that they were there when they walked me to my first day kindergarten at Vance School. So they come to all of my things. And my, my beautiful sister-in-law Linda Marshoni and her husband Frank, those are my great nieces who actually did that project. And when we were asked to go to Dish and Dad participate in their fundraising, I didn't know it was for New Britain and when they said it, I was like, New Britain, really? She's like, yeah. So I thought it was an amazing thing and I love that, that kindness emotion and we're looking to do something like that at Smalley with our, um, fifth graders. I think it's, and writing proposals and thinking about how you want that money to be spent, I love that. So it was a great idea. And Laura Skinner. And, and I had also Joanna Gagman, who was here from Smalley, so. And Salas Kapalas made me cry tonight, it was really nice. So I look forward to just continuing on my path at Smalley. It's, there's no better place to be than Smalley, I love it. It's a beautiful school. If you haven't been there, come by, I'll take a little tour. You'll be so impressed. And that's it. Thank you very much.
I was chuckling because Superintendent and I were just, we were scribbling. Sometimes we scribble, every once in a while. And she was saying we needed to do Kindness in Motion at the schools and then you stand up and you're like, and I think we're gonna find Kindness in Motion as well. And I'm like, and this is why we love it. All right.
Motion to discuss item 5Q.
Yes, he's back. All those in.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We lost you, Mr. King.
I'll try to be brief tonight. I know there's a football game tonight for you Giant fans, they're playing some expansion team down in Texas, so we'll see what happens. I know, it's payback. Now here's per pupil expenditures. We, every year we go through this. The per pupil expenditures is always done based on our September 1st filing with the state of Connecticut. Coming up in January, February, the state revises this number slightly and usually it's because all the numbers are in, they, they do the computation in October and then they revise because the audit happens and sometimes there's slight changes. It might be slight change in districts per pupil expenditure, it might be a slight change in the enrollment and it changes the numbers by a couple of dollars. So last year, when I did this, it was 13,059. In January, February, it became 13,061. It's always a couple of dollar changes. Really, things really not have, haven't changed that much. If you, if you look at our numbers right here, you'll see in 1415, we were 13,033. Then we went to 13,196. Then we peaked at 13,391. We took a drop last year at 13,061 and now we're back to 13,383. So we're still lower than we were two years ago. We are still 168th in the state. As you notice, we're 166th, 62nd, 167, 167, 168. So, you know, things are looking a little better, they will be looking better over time. When I talk about time, I really mean time. We all realize that the Alliance being one of the poorest districts, the state of Connecticut is actually giving more money through the Alliance district for all the, you know, ECS. So we're seeing this current year, we're seeing additional $4 million. We're hoping to see additional $4 million next year, but it's a long ways away and I'm gonna tell you why. Currently, we're 168. Danbury is 169, you'll see that in a farther slide. 167th is Meriden, they're at 13,847. You have the detailed stuff there. East Hartford is 166 at 13,866. You gotta remember, these are Alliance districts. They may not be getting as much money as New Britain as an Alliance district, but they're getting, they're getting additional funding. So we may move up next year. We might pass one of these districts, we may not. Ellington is, is at 165, they're 13,950. So I'm gonna tell you, next year, we're probably gonna be somewhere in the 169, uh, 166, 167 range. It's gonna be a slow process. It's gonna take years for us to start moving up. If you look at the data, the eight pages of data I provided you, there's a couple of school districts that are in the $14,000 range, but most of them are $15,000 and change. So when you think about it, you get an additional $4 million a year. We have 10,000 students, maybe 10,000 to 11,000 students. That only brings your per pupil expenditures up 300 and change every year. So next year, I'm expecting, we're probably gonna be somewhere, give or take, around $14,000. Now, $14,000 is only gonna buy you 168, 167, 166. If you look at the next slide, we go, here's the five-year history on per pupil expenditure. Durgai is the poorest district in the state of Connecticut. Over the last five years, you're gonna see it really in order of who has, who, who has the most expenditures. Every year is the same. Hartford is always number one in Durgai. Wyndham is two, New Haven is three, London four, Waterbury five, Bridgeport has been sixth and New Britain's always been seventh. So we haven't changed at all in Durgai. We're actually showing comparison, the Durgai average last year is 16,773. We improved slightly. So instead of a shortfall of $34.8 million, our projected shortfall is probably $33.9 million. The state average actually increased by about $600 last year. So we're actually falling behind the state. I think one thing you have to remember when you look at the per pupil expenditures, many school districts in the state of Connecticut, and I've been saying this every year, their enrollment's going down. New Britain, the Danburys, the Waterburys, their enrollment's probably staying kinda constant. Many school districts in the state actually, if you, if you watch different towns and so forth, they'll have a 2% or 3% budget increase and that comes from local taxation and you'll see that on an annual basis. So when you think about it, if your enrollment keeps going down 2% a year and, and your community gives you an increase of 2% or 3%, even 1%, overall, you're getting 3% or 4%, 5% more in, in funds for per pupil expenditures. So I think that's what you're seeing. You actually see some of these districts, you're hearing other communities out there, they're saying, we're not being funded like we used to and there's probably some truth to that matter. But at the same time, their enrollment's going down. So if that district out there is saying, we're not gonna give you an increase or a 1% increase, they're also seeing a decrease in enrollment. So when you have that decrease in enrollment, 2% or 3%, you have a 1% increase or nothing, you're actually seeing a 3% funding for those, for those, for those children. We don't have that in New Britain. The next slide you have here shows really the history over the last 20 years. Back in 99, 2000, the state has a website out there that shows all per pupil expenditures. Gone through that. Back in 99, 2000, New Britain was 67th, which is, which is good because out of 169 districts, we were 67th in per pupil expenditure, which means we, there was only 66 communities that had a higher number than we did. In 2001, 2002, we went to, we were at 47th. And then you see the history going up, that every year then, um, you know, we've been in the, I think from 2011, 2012, we've been in the 160 range. Just remember, there's only 169 communities, you can't go any higher than 169. Now, the last slide is really just a comparison of us in Danbury. Danbury is actually has the lowest per pupil expenditure in the state of Connecticut over the last four years. You're seeing five years worth of data here. Danbury's been 169 from 1516 to 1819. When you look at this slide, you're also seeing that the, it's, it's more of a narrowing now. We're getting closer and closer to Danbury. Last year, we were $233 away, or two years ago, $233. In 1819, which is last year, we're $86 away. So it's getting closer. Now, do I think Danbury's gonna, um, we're gonna pass Danbury at 169 next year? It's kinda hard to say. I mean, I know Danbury does get some additional funding through their local contribution every year. It may not be a large additional funding, about a million dollars or so. They're also receiving a little more Alliance money, just like we are. They probably aren't receiving as much as we are, but their enrollment. Danbury is one community out there that, you know, when I talk about New Britain's enrollment being kinda flat, you know, we, I'm not saying it's really decreased, it might be a slight decrease. Danbury's actually seeing an enrollment that's, is going up, you know, which is a real rarity in Connecticut. So we're, we're basically staying level, maybe a slight decrease over time. Danbury's seeing the opposite, they're seeing a slight increase. So many of the communities in Connecticut actually have a decrease. We have less kids today than we had, you know, 20 years ago. Unfortunately, in New Britain, we have about the same or slightly less. So you have all the data right here, I gave you a handout. It's eight pages, it shows you all the communities out there per pupil expenditure. You can go under, you look at it and you'll notice that it's just based on, um, you know, your, your total cost that you put in and it's also based on an enrollment. And your enrollment is the number of kids you have in your school district, but it also has, it's also the number of kids that reside in New Britain that may be going to magnet schools. So when we actually are spending money at magnet schools, that's part of the equation. So the numerator is what we totally spend, the denominator is our students plus all New Britain kids. Last bud?
Any questions?
You showed there the drop from 47 in 2001, 2002, I think, down to 68. These are all the total per pupil spending. There isn't, we haven't got a breakdown of the local contribution versus state dollars.
That's really, no, that's really difficult. I mean, we can do it and so forth, but you're looking at all the communities. I mean, you're, you're.
That, um, I've seen different reports out there, like back in 1415 or 1516, they only show that Bridgeport was the only community that was funding less through taxation than New Britain. For here's an example, I looked, I looked at Danbury today and I see Danbury's general fund budget, I think this year is somewhere about, I think it's 139, 139 million dollars. So if you think about it, Danbury has, their enrollment's a little lower than ours right now. Their local contribution's 139. They probably don't, they probably don't get the Title I grants and the Alliance funding's lower, but their, their, their local fund is higher than ours and they have less students.
So our local funding in this budget compared to local funding from last year's budget?
We're still 125.7. Yeah, we're still, we're still, yeah. Well, we're still the same. I mean, I, I know, you know, you know, one of the things that's been, we, we talked about last year, the additional Alliance money, the other thing that we're receiving this year is the excess cost, which by state statute should always been going over to education. That's a one-time, you know, situation, you know, it's supposed to go to education. So that is part of our number this year. But in reality, our budget is 125.7. We did our budget last year, we, we actually had a budget of, let's say, 128.7 and we, we do a net expenditure. We reduce the expenditure by the revenue that we're anticipating. We won't know what that revenue is until somewhere around January, January, February, when we start receiving what we know the number is. That's just a guess right now. Maybe higher, maybe lower.
Just because of political season and everybody's throwing around help for us?
Yeah, no, I mean, the excess, excess cost is by state statute, it's, it's law.
The state money and local funding has essentially been flat here and that the additional money that we're getting is additional state grant money. The excess, the excess cost is, it's a reimbursement.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Next on the list, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2020 Board of, Board of Education meeting calendar.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. I don't know if you all read the email from this lady, but she talked about the one thing that was on the list was the meeting that happens like today, where it is the meeting before elections, whether or not we wanna keep it here or make it the Monday after elections for the November meeting.
That would be Veterans Day.
Well, for the Tuesday.
So you would do the Tuesday.
You could do the Tuesday. But, you know, thinking about that week, that was one of the things and then whatever else.
As far as next year, it's not a day where anyone locally is gonna be up for election, so I think that it's fine to leave it for next year. Maybe something to consider the following year, but it's, it's a federal, it's presidential, it's not local. So I, I'm happy leaving it where it is.
Then my only other thought would be is depending on who's up for reelection, who's not and who's a committee chair, right? Because then you're not gonna do anything in committee for that whole month before that meeting. Like, we just did committee last week.
Right. So you would still have your committees, but then that next.
Two weeks before the meeting instead of one week before the meeting. And then just not have the actual board meeting.
You'd have the board meeting the following Tuesday. Or you could even have it a Wednesday if you wanted that week.
It's not always gonna be Veterans Day, the week after election.
Right.
I think the thing is next year, no one's up for election, so it doesn't matter at all.
Right.
For the 2020.
Maybe for the following year.
And you guys can figure that out.
Kick that can down the road.
You're good. So that's the one. And then I heard from some other board members that they missed meeting. I'm just putting it out there, that was with someone that said the other day that they missed meeting. They felt like not having the two meetings a month was, sometimes there were things that they wanted to address or be able to, things that needed to happen as far as actions on the board and that two meetings was that they missed having those. Don't shoot the messenger, I'm just saying. It's up to y'all. I'm just putting it out there as that was, I heard two things. Those were the two things that people mentioned and that is on you. I'm just putting it out there as points of information. Do with it as you wish.
To that, I'd just like to say, I, I do feel like there are times when it feels like it's a long time in between, but we also do have the ability as the board to call special meetings. So if there is a lot of things that are going and moving, I think, then that's something where we just as a board need to be aware that there might be some Mondays where we used to have regular meetings that it can be called as a special meeting and maybe that just becomes something that we try to leave that one day open as much as possible and not make grand plans for it. And just understand that if there's a lot of things going on, that's something that the board can do. And I, I also would say that really, since we're having so many new people come onto the board that perhaps it would be behoove us to postpone this, passage of this to our December meeting so we can get input from new board members.
There was a reason for the put on for this month, it has to be posted to town.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
It can be a draft. It can be fixed.
Yeah. We, they ask for it by then, but I don't think we are required to post it with them. We just can't have a regular meeting for 30 days after it's posted. So if we post it December, if we send it to them on December 5th?
We called it a special meeting, I think, that last time.
Well, and we'd still be fine by our January 7th, because it's more than 30 calendar days out. So I believe we'd be fine putting it off.
There was that thing when Matt had that baby.
Yeah.
The information in on time, and so they, you know, they got upset with us, so we had to have a special meeting instead. But, I mean, you can still have the meeting. They're not going to lock their doors, so it'll be all right.
Motion is to approve.
So we don't have to approve. We can have another motion to...
My motion would be to postpone it to our December regular meeting, so we can get input for the fewer board members.
Any... Yes. I was thinking that too.
I believe we adopted it after the newborn was constituted.
I think the second one, not the...
Yeah, the second meeting in November.
Because we had two meetings, which is why we were able to do that. We don't have two meetings in November. But that's okay. So, motion on the floor is to postpone. If there is a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of postponing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Oh, Annie.
You got two. You have two for the record. Mayo Kay and Annie Parker.
Oh, and I did say...
And Dr. Sims as well.
This is quiet.
Troublemaker.
He's leaving, you gotta take soup.
No, I get it. I think having it, and you can always change it if you have to change it, but it's better to have it, have things in place. All right. Next thing, I'll be... I'll entertain a motion to...
I'll move to approve a new position, one full-time kindergarten teacher for Gaffney Elementary School.
Second.
All those in favors signify by, oh, sorry. Discussion?
We talked about this in personal, and I will say, the week before that personal meeting, I got the scheduled kindergarten visits to the library with class numbers, and the numbers at Gaffney popped off the page at me. They're really full, 28, 27, 26 kids. So this is to add a fourth kindergarten at that school to get the numbers down to closer to where it should be for 5-year-old students.
Oh, yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? You want to do the motion?
Sure. Motion to approve one full-time adult education retention specialist for adult education. We reviewed this. I do believe this is paid for.
Second.
This is paid for by the adult grant. I don't remember the specifics of this one.
Yeah, it's by the grant.
Yeah, by the grant. Required position? This is, I don't, I'm trying to remember.
It was to assist with attendance and making sure that they understood the policy on attendance, because it's stricter for adults. If they miss so many classes, then they do not receive their credit. And so this person, in theory, would assist with those folks and maybe even, as we talked about, figuring out some strategies to keep people at school, whether it be looking at daycare for the children and figuring out partnerships, whether there may be the partnership with the YMCA or another agency, a church, or whatever community-based agency that would allow for less distractions for parents and less things, boundaries that are getting in the way of adult education, and hoping to let them be more successful. So that is, that is the goal of that position.
This is grant-funded and it's required, required position, right?
I don't think it's required. I don't think it's required, but...
In making sure that we maintain attendance.
I think it's highly recommended.
Is this the one that someone else is kind of doing anyway? Right, so it was happening, it's just now it's official.
Right.
It's less hours.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The next one?
Can I actually motion that we take items?
Special education one?
Items F, G, H altogether, so that would be approving new position requests for two full-time parent educators, one registered behavior tech, and one special education teacher for the key program.
Second.
All right. Discussion?
Again, I think this is for a new classroom to accommodate increased enrollment in the key program. So all these staff members would go into that new classroom, which is already full. It's viable.
Excuse me. Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll move to approve one FTE special ed teacher for Slade and Pulaski Middle Schools.
Second.
Is this, just as a question, is this one teacher between the two schools?
Yes.
Just making sure I was reading that correctly.
Yeah, if I'm looking up that. Yeah, it's increased caseloads and scheduling constraints, and in support of the Wilson reading system at the two middle schools, and it's one teacher to support both buildings.
Other question?
That brings us to what kind of total capacity is supporting Wilson, which is for kids with disabilities?
What percentage?
Can I ask Amy Henderson? Who is not having the podium anymore?
She just went out.
So, I will say, I can't answer that. I will get you the information. We have our trainer of trainers who's bringing new people into training every year around Wilson. Our goal is to, oh, Donna, you're here, you can answer that. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Can you repeat the question, though, please?
I was just wondering, what does that, how many staff do we have now between the middle schools?
So we have one currently who has completed the certification last year, and then we have one at the other middle school that is going through her certification this year. But the issue is that in sixth grade, the caseloads are so high that even at the school where we have the certified person who could deliver, she's not able to because she needs to meet the caseload requirements first. So we really need another .5 for now so that we can relieve her from the caseload, the service delivery for all students, you know, in sixth grade, so that she can do the Wilson for the students in the school that require the Wilson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Last personnel item is to approve new position request for one FTE Behavior Support Assistant for New Britain High School. This is for a full-time person who, for students who require time in the focus room. That job is current, are they, they're pulling somebody from the classroom?
It's in the Bridges program right now, so we have one person in there right now. I mean, that's not adequate for the level of need. Donna, I mean, you can speak to us a little bit. We have some kids that are supposed to be in there, went through a restorative process, and many times kids are also leaving the classroom, so we need, really need two individuals to support the level by now.
We had someone from the larger building stepping in to help out because there was such a great need within that focus room. It's really a room where students can sort of process some of the lower-level behaviors, which takes it sort of off of the larger discipline, if you will. It takes it off of the plate of the deans and administrators. So we had a lot of students in the program that needed to sort of be referred to the focus room, and there was too many, too many students for just one BSA who happens to be new. So they had someone from the building supporting. She now has been hired for a different position. And so we just want to make sure that that room is properly staffed because there are some, there's some concerns with the students, you know, again, being out of class and also needing to go through that process.
And also, if I may add, we've been, you know, we employ the voice time model. Amy Paramus has come in, she's a consultant, she's working with us, and she's been here a couple times now in the past month, and it was her recommendation, coming in, observing what's going on, that we need this additional support as well, so she can come to that decision.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve revised policy 61, 62.4, volunteers.
Second.
This is a policy that was brought before the board. We had just two years ago, but there was a concern that was raised earlier this year with parents coming into one of the buildings, Lincoln Elementary, and there was just a miscommunication about them having to go through the full moral of a background check just to do work in the classroom with the teacher. This policy clarifies that there's difference between those volunteers who are coming in and, say, working with a teacher who are being supervised and they're volunteering, and those who are coming in and having unsupervised contact, even if it's reading a hallway or working with students in that situation. And it just delineates the two, the two groups and what our processes are for them, just to make it hopefully more clear for our families and for our staff who are trying to apply this policy.
So just, I'm seeing Diana puzzling because I know that all the child is doing a lot of stuff with background checks, but, so a parent who's coming in and working with a teacher in the classroom would not need a full background check. One who might be doing individual tutoring or reading with a child out in the hallway or someplace else who would have one-on-one contact with the kid without a teacher there would still need to have a background check.
And to go even further, it does mention that for the volunteers who are, say, going just into the classroom, we do use Raptorware, which is a system that checks against the sex offender database. So everyone who's coming in is going through that, at least. And then we also have community partners who volunteer. We've had like RSVP and other organizations who do reading with students, things like that, and they'd have to go through the slightly larger background check policy. Within our administrative procedures, we cap how much we charge for that at $15, and the superintendent has it within her discretion to waive that entirely, depending on the situation. But we cap it at 15.
It's getting, it's getting late, so I'm gonna, I'm going to start coughing, I'm just warning you now, it's just after 8 o'clock, just doesn't stop, so, almost time. Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve policy 4111 and 4211, hiring of staff.
Second.
Discussion ready?
This is, this is just a very small change. I believe it is Dr. Sims recommended taking out the "or special interest in" just because that seems far too easy to hedge, and it doesn't really get to the meat of the substance. And we also wanted to delineate that all appointments for administrative staff, you know, principals, assistant principals, et cetera, is something that requires the approval of the full board. This came from questions from the HR, from the Talon Office and from the superintendent, where we were having candidates walk away from positions because of the fact that we, there was the belief that the full board had to approve them all, even though our policy never said that. And so we wanted to clarify that, that for teachers and all of those lower-level positions that the superintendent has, there's all those vacancies. Our policy, you can see where the strikeouts are. This was what our policy essentially had been before, but I think it was something where through practice, our practice was not matching our policy.
Correct.
And Talon Office reached out to other communities and see what they're doing because it really was becoming an issue. So that's why we wanted to make that delineation clear in our policy.
And for those of you who want, what it would, what it will look like is, it won't, on our blue sheets, they used to be blue, I don't know, but they're white sheets now, but when it says the new positions and things of that, the new position requests will still come because that's fiscal, but the new hires will not come. So they don't have to wait to hire somebody for another meeting. But the new position requests, the amount of money being allotted for a position will still come through the board, because that's the piece that we worry about more so than the who. The who comes with Nancy and the Talon Office judgment, and then for the more meatier positions, then that's when we get the who. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve policy 61, 64.11, drug education.
Second.
In your packet, you can see, this was a very outdated policy. It had last been approved in 1985. So, things have changed a little since then. And honestly, the interesting thing is there, the language has gotten a little bit more refined. What we're looking to replace it with is, in our packets, it's the most recent CAVE sample policy on drug education, and it includes all of the different elements that are currently required under there. I imagine that we'll probably see changes to this going forward around e-cigarettes and vaping and all of that as well, but this is currently what CAVE is recommending, and just covers ourselves with regards to what the Connecticut statutes are.
Questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve revisions, which is essentially striking policy 5145.52, which is equalized physical education and athletics.
Second.
Also 1985.
Also from 1985. And the reason we're striking this policy is everything in here, aside from just the outdated language in the policy, this is all covered under Title IX.
Right.
It's, we don't need a separate policy on this because we have Title IX referenced in many of our policies. So just having a policy on the books for this is highly redundant.
We were probably being very progressive in 1985.
We were going to make sure everybody gets a chip. Yes, indeed. I'm sure the girls were so happy. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next policy.
Motion to reaffirm board policy statement 0523.10, multicultural education.
Second.
And really, the only addition to this, the policy language is staying the same, but we are adding the legal citation at the, at the bottom because they added the requirement for African-American and Puerto Rican and Latino studies in the curriculum, so that's just added as a additional legal citation, because it affects this policy.
All hearts and minds, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yes, sir.
Just as a point, I wanted to apologize because I was, when I made the motion to postpone earlier on the calendar, I wasn't, I didn't realize that there were some people that had serious reservations, and I, if people liked, well, if people liked to discuss it further, I'd be happy to go back and re, like, make a motion to reconsider. I just didn't, I didn't realize there were multiple people. I just didn't, I didn't realize there were multiple people, I don't like to cut off debate, that's, just wanted to make sure. But I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the board go into executive session for items P and Q, which is discussion of the superintendent's year-end evaluation, and also, uh, discussion of a superintendent contract extension.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright. We're gonna do the board first, and then we will call you in.
Okay.
We're back.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the, uh, President Nicole Rodriguez, Vice President myself, Mr. Mercier, and Board Secretary Gail Sanders Conley to negotiate and execute, uh, a, uh, extension, a, a extension, a contract extension with the superintendent of schools, Nancy Sarah.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Beautiful.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda, this would be item R. Item six R, uh, and this is approving a bid waiver purchase order and contract approval between Gaff, between the district and the Arts for Learning Connecticut, in the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred dollars.
It's in our packet, right?
Yes, that's the one.
And they misspelled the word theater on every single box.
I was trying to figure out what that is, I'm looking at it going, why does it say theater? I was like, is that a new name I don't know about?
They spelled it right on the front page, and then I was like, yeah, I was like, is it a type of program that I'm not aware of?
That's what I was wondering, right? I'm like, the rear, is that? I didn't know.
So that must have been a, like, written and then just carried down on the Excel sheet, but it was like...
Is that in the packet?
Anyway.
Oh, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'd love to see these things come up in policy, because we just add policy. I mean, um, facilities last week.
Could I just speak to that for one minute?
Yes.
This got lost in the world of the email, and we don't know how. It wasn't that they weren't responsive, somehow it just got lost somewhere in email. This is, for us, this was done in advance, we piled, started piling this at TC two years ago on a smaller scale, and our kids respond very well. Um, this is for, we're looking more into the therapeutic end of it in terms of visual arts, performing arts, theater, and those with our students on the spectrum. And so that's gonna begin that.
Which makes me extremely happy.
Yeah, we're excited, they do arts for learning, does a really nice job.
Any other questions, comments, sir?
Thank her gift.
Oh.
I hope it helped them when they were just in there.
No, I, I just said, this is, that was a joke, Mr. Mercier. She's opening, oh my goodness. Wait, then open the gifts. Oh, there's, you have to pass one down.
Nancy, you stole one.
I did, who, though?
Pass it down to you.
Okay, because you opened it. Can you pass yours?
No.
Oh, goodness.
One of these actually is full of spring snakes.
They're bookends.
Did you have a special made?
Or a weapon.
No, I actually waited, I, I was looking for something that represented us.
I love it, very cool.
And you have a photo box to use later.
It's not gonna be an ornament with that string on it.
Yeah, no, that's not, it could be, it could be something to use in a parking garage. I was just gonna say, maybe when I'm walking to my car.
I was hanging it from my ear.
It should all be...
I thought it was maybe a tiny bookend.
Yeah, yeah, you've got bookends, bookends are always coming handy.
They do. Mr. Sanders wants to see the...
Finally, if you want, confetti real quick.
I would, yes. I just wanna say that it was a complete honor to work with such a competent, compassionate, and committed group of people for the past year and a half. I've been in politics for ten years, I'm not running, I think this will be the first time in, uh, forty years there hasn't been a Jim Sanders on the ballot. So, some people are thrilled about that, I'm sure of it, but, um...
Wow, I didn't think of it at that rate.
So, and I'm not running because my business has just exploded, and I can't commit the time. As you guys notice, I've missed some meetings. But I just wanna say again, it was an honor to work with you guys, and if you see me at public participation, then you know it's a problem. So I will, I will be watching from afar, but again, it was an honest pleasure. With every, everybody I've worked with over the past ten years, um, I've never seen less politics. I've seen zero politics here, and that's how it should be. Um, and for that, I, I am extremely grateful, because this is probably the best year and a half that I've spent in the past ten years, uh, in this, you know.
In politics.
Yeah, exactly, so, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you. I joke a lot about leaving and it's gonna be your... Right, it's gonna be your headache now and all that other good stuff, but I, but seriously, um, it was definitely interesting to see, um, I celebrated my son's sixth birthday a couple weeks ago, and realizing that his whole life I've been on this board. So bear the water.
Don't do it, don't do it.
But I did it because of my children, and I did it because I wanted to make sure that they enjoyed New Britain, like I enjoy New Britain, going to school. And that they got, we could make as much change as we possibly could in this small room, and do as much good as we could for children. And so, I thank you for humoring me and, uh, listening, uh, because you guys, I definitely think are active listeners, and that is something you don't find often. Collaborators, like you said, and the voice, I think, that we put out into, um, the school system reverberates that we work together, we're collaborative, and it's okay if we fall down because we're gonna try to get back up. And we're gonna just, you know, we're just gonna keep fighting with that spirit that we do and that New Britain does, and we do the best that we can each day for the kids. So, thank you.
And best of luck to our two incumbents who are on the election.
Yes.
Marilyn and Gail, right?
Right, exactly, and I don't care about the party line. For that, I do not care.
No, we want them to. I can't take, I can't take all the new.
Embrace the new, isn't it embracing the new?
We've experienced too much new.
No offense.
We're happier here.
You trickle in, right?
You know, it's nerve-wracking because, um, in six years, I think, by year three, we started to get it right, and I think these last, you know, the last half of, um, my time here, I feel like we have finally gotten it to a point where it's just a voice, and not a voice with a color behind it, not a voice with, you know, a political, um, thing behind it. We don't worry about what our signs say in here, and that is what we really aim to do for kids. We are all passionate, we're all on the board for a different reason, we all come here with different backgrounds, some in business, some in education, some advocacy, advocate for, um, early learning, later learning, multicultural learning, whatever it is, we're here voicing our passion and our concerns to make sure that it does right for kids, and not because we, you know, not to push an agenda, right? And then looking at what we have in front of us and looking at those resources and making sure that it's something that we can stand behind. And when we don't agree, we don't agree, and we're very vocal about that in a way that is respectful, and we try not to tear each other down in public. We ask the questions that we need to ask, so that we can have the clarity, so that we can have clear consciousness when we make decisions, but we don't do it in a way that tears each other down that we don't wanna come back. Because we've had times in which we felt that way. And so that was the goal in the last couple of years of, you know, with leadership, we've been really trying to make sure that everybody had a voice, and it wasn't that people were not respected. I wanted to, you know, Nick and I talked about it a lot, when we were newbies, we didn't always feel respected and heard, um, and so we wanted to make sure that that wasn't the case for people when they came on.
It's great to do a job.
Mm, agreed.
So with that, I guess we'll adjutant a motion.
Motion to adjutant.